Good morning, councillors, and welcome to the City Lifestyle Committee of the 25th of January 2021. I trust you've all had an enjoyable break and a feeling fully recharged and ready to get underway. I'd like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional custodians on the land on which we meet and by paying my respects to elders past, present, and emerging. I'd like to advise meeting attendees that this meeting is being webcasted and audio recorded. You might like to give everyone at home a little wave. Leaves of absence. Councillors, I have received a request for a leave of absence from councillor Bradley. Are there any other leaves of absence to report? There being none, can I please have someone to move councillor Bradley's leave of absence be accepted? Thank you, councillor Murphy, may I have a seconda? Thank you, Mayor Power. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, and that has been unanimously supported. Councillors, we're going to be jumping around a little bit in your agenda today, so we're going to kick off with item 5.1, which is a report from the City of Logan Safe City Strategy and Action Plan 2016 to 2020. Before we pass over to our community services manager, Mr Nick McGuire, do we have, do any councillors have any conflicts of interest that they wish to declare? There being none, I now refer to the community services manager to open for public discussion. Nick, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, councillors. This report is a, you may recall that at the back end of last year, you endorsed a new Safe City Strategy and Action Plan for the next five years, but this report is essentially the last progress report from the previous Safe City Strategy and Action Plan that ran from 2016 to 2020. So, the report itself includes a range of different high level of, high level achievements that were delivered over the life of that strategy, but the background paper as well also includes a range of detail about the specific things that were delivered over the last 12 months. So essentially, the recommendation is just for the report to be endorsed, and I'm happy to take any questions. I'll pass it over to my learned colleague behind me at the podium.
Sorry, councillors, do we have any questions? This is looking very, very good for you and your team, Nick. Councillors, the recommendation is on the board behind me. Can I have a mover for the recommendation? Thank you councillor Raven, may I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Hall. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has been unanimously supported. Thank you. Thanks, councillors. Moving on, councillors, I now draw your attention to page 79 of your committee report, which is on the reconciliation, reconciliation action plan 2019 to 2020, the final report and next steps. This is item 5.2, but before we open for discussion on this item, do any councillors have any conflicts of interest they wish to declare? There being none, I'll now invite Nick, the manager, to speak to the report. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I should have mentioned before, in the previous item, we sent a message around at the end of last week, but also just Erin has now officially moved into the acting program leader role in the community safety team as Keely's gone off on maternity leave. She's still a couple of weeks before she's due to have her baby, but Erin is in that role now, so, which is great.
Welcome, Erin. Thanks.
Okay, in regards, in relation to this next item, so the purpose of this report is to present you with an overview of all of the actions from the, our second reconciliation action plan, which ran for two years over the 2019 to 2020 period, and also to seek your endorsement to develop a new reconciliation action plan. Important to point out that the reconciliation action plan is a whole of council document. It's not something that the community services branch owns on its own. There's a, a lot of different outcomes and achievements in that document that have been delivered by branches from all over the organisation. It's primarily our responsibility to help facilitate the development of the reconciliation action plan and also to present these sorts of reports. I just wanted to, to highlight that because there are some amazing achievements in the document, and they are the responsibilities of a broad range of different areas across the organisation. The background paper provides a great overview of those outcomes, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Nick. I have a question from councillor Lane.
So, mine's not so much a question. RAP is more than just reaching targets. It's acknowledging the contributions of First Nation workers in our community and, you know, the pathways that are available to them. It looks at the programs to ensure that there's an accessibility of places so that local residents can actually access some of our services. There's so much hard work being done by Logan City Council officers on the RAP programme. I've been to several of the meetings, hadn't been with them online, and I'm impressed by the work that Rochelle and through you, director, and Nick, the work that's being done on this. I think the space is amazing, that there's some hard conversations that council officers have. They ask themselves questions and they challenge themselves every single day to achieve the best outcome. So, if you could please pass along my thanks to the team, as well as my congratulations on this RAP. It's, it's a great read.
Thank you councillor Lane. I'd also like to acknowledge those councillors who've taken part in the RAP Action Plan Working Group and so on. I know it's been a very enriching experience for me, and I'm sure it has for all, and I hark councillor Lane's comments. Thank you councillor Lane. Councillor Wilcox.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to double check. Did we have community representation in this group?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, we don't have community representation on the, on the RAP Working Group. The, the RAP itself is largely an internally focused document about what council can do better and improve on in regards to reconciliation and all those sorts of things, but we do engage quite extensively with our community when it comes to the development of the RAP to better understand the sorts of things that we can do. So, we haven't historically had external representation on that group, but it is a big part of our engagement process.
Thank you. Do I have any other questions from any other councillors? Councillor Lane, you might just want to clip your microphone off. No further questions. Nick, any further information you want to impart with regard to the reconciliation plan? Awesome. Councillors, the recommendation is on the board behind me. I have a mover in councillor Lane, I have a seconda in councillor Murphy. All those in favour, please raise your hand. And that has you been unanimously supported. Thank you, councillors. That marks the end of the community service manager's report. Nick, do you have any general business for councillors?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I do have one item. It's in relation to a petition that councillor Murphy presented at the Ordinary Meeting on the 9th of December, and it's really just to close the loop with you councillors in regards to what we've done with that. So, as mentioned, councillor Murphy presented a petition to the Ordinary Meeting on the 9th of December, and that was in regards to the, the 24-hour operation of the police beat at Eagleby. And effectively, what we've done is we've now passed on that petition with a letter, a letter accompanying it to the police minister, and we've also written a letter back to the chief petitioner just to let them know exactly what we've done with that petition. So, effectively, it's just an item just to close the loop with you on, on what's happened with that particular petition.
Thank you for the update, Nick. Nick, any further GB for councillors? Councillors, do we have any general business for the manager? There being none. Thank you, Nick. Appreciate you providing that update and reports for us. Councillors, I now draw your attention to item 4.1, which is a report regarding the local infrastructure program with special consideration projects via Sport Leisure and Facilities Branch, and I'll invite our Sport Leisure and Facilities Manager, Mr Nigel Brown, to please enter discussions. But before we get underway, do any councillors have any conflicts of interest they wish to declare? There being none, I refer your attention to page three of your agenda, and I'll now pass on to Sport Leisure and Facilities Manager, Nigel, you may proceed.
Thank you. Through the chair. So, this report is the first one that we've brought forward where we call for the special consideration around projects under the local infrastructure program. As you're aware, that program has been established to enable the undertaking of, of local divisional projects that are delivered by different branches across the organisation. The, the reasons why these have come forward is that when, in discussions with the divisional councillors, there's been a request for the projects to be delivered by the organisations within these particular lease areas, and in accordance with the guidelines, that would require special consideration of, of council to, to approve that on the basis that normally the projects would be delivered by the, the respective branches. So, you'll note in the recommendations that each of those projects is listed, and there's also a table which provides a bit more background on each of those. My recommendations are to support all but two of the special consideration projects, and they both relate to the Logan Brothers Rugby League Club installation of perimeter fencing. And, and if I can speak briefly to that, there's, there's primarily three areas, excuse me, where we professionally, from our sporting rec planning perspective, would encourage that project not to proceed. And that's based on firstly around the public access provisions to ensure that there is continued to be public access to the, to that location in accordance with subordinate local law 5.1. It also, we also reference the maintenance implications, being a leased area to a sporting club, this is a fairly substantial piece of infrastructure which the club will need to be responsible for the ongoing maintenance and replacement of. And also just noting and referencing the, the Logan City Council Facility Guidelines. So, this facility would gets categorised as a local A club, which is at for local level use, and that, the guidelines which were endorsed by council don't require the, the fencing of the perimeter of that facility for that purpose. And finally, there's also a link back to the precinct plan that's being undertaken about maintaining open and accessible spaces throughout that, throughout that area. So, they're the, they're the, the background, I guess, from a sporting rec planning perspective. The reason why it's come, as I said, is around the fact that it's looking at that being delivered by the, by the Logan Brothers. It's, and it's being split funded by, across two divisions, so hence that being provided. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Nigel. I have a couple of questions for councillors. We might kick off with councillor Raven. I'm happy to kick off with councillor Lane, if you'd prefer.
That can be good.
He was a bit quick on getting his hand up. Thank you councillor Lane.
Thanks very much. Through you, Madam Chair. So, Nigel, thank you very much for bringing this report forward. I know that Logan Metro and the Allbreeds Club will be very pleased to know that they have your support. When it comes to Logan Brothers Rugby League Club, when I was first elected, not long after I came to SLF and I asked about a fence around the club because they had social problems impacting on, on their ability to maintain their fields, there was also the opportunity for an entrust cup application, and I was advised that council does not support fencing in facilities of that type. And then we found out in a council meeting that council did support fencing of that type over in the east. So, all of a sudden, it was a, it was a, an opportunity for us to again look at this for Logan Brothers. Now, under 5.1 is, is part of the reason why you've cited that, and I appreciate all of the points that you've made, but just to, to have a look at them. We've got a netball court down in Beanley that has actual bollards in between, so a person in a wheelchair can't access that facility after hours. We have a facility down at Mecon Park that has six-foot wire fencing with a bit of chain wire around the top where people can't access that facility. We have the facility over in the east that I mentioned previously that was given approval, and the fencing was built by council. So, public access provisions, as much as it is important, it's also important for those community groups to be able to maintain their fields, to be able to close a gate when they're doing aerial spraying or spraying of the fields, to stop people from getting sick, and to stop children from playing on it as that, you know, that bindi weed killer gets soaked into the grass. It stops horses from riding across and pooping all over the fields. It stops the little miners coming and digging up little divots all over the fields. But Logan Brothers actually hasn't asked to close their fields off. They've asked for gates so that they can close them during major games if they do get entrust, and at those times when they're doing field maintenance. Recently, they put down a, a level of, of soil to rejuvenate the fields, and within an hour of placing it down, there were people running across the fields, completely ruining what they were trying to achieve. Closing it off for short periods of time shouldn't be beyond the scope of council to do. I appreciate that you have a job to do and that you are not approving this project, but I will say to my fellow councillors that this is a, a sporting club in the local area that has, over the Christmas period alone, dealt with public displays of affection in and around their facilities, deep public affection. They've dealt with broken glass onto the fields. They've dealt with vomit all over the sides of their buildings. They have horses riding across and, as I said, defecating on the fields. I, I think that affording them the opportunity to do this isn't a bad thing, but the last thing that I will say is when I first raised this project with SLF, I was given an estimation, and I'll make that really clear, it was an estimation only, of around $400,000 to fence that facility. Logan Brothers has come in under 150. Now, that's a substantial saving from the Division Two Infrastructure Fund. It's a substantial saving from the Division Five Infrastructure Fund, and for one of the largest junior sporting clubs, football clubs in Queensland, I think giving them a fence is not a bad thing. And if it takes them doing it at that price and they have to maintain it, and if I've got to kick in extra money down the track, then that's what I will do, but I just think that bang for buck, this is looking pretty good. That's it.
Thank you councillor Lane. I, I know you didn't have a specific question in there, but I would like to give the manager opportunity to respond to some of the issues that you highlighted. Thank you, Nigel.
Thank you. Through the chair. Thank you for that feedback, and, and it's, they're really valid points. There is a very, it's a very difficult challenge for our sporting clubs to be responsible for the maintenance of the fields across our city as per our policy. I'm sure if you spoke to colleagues in other cities where councils actually continue to maintain those fields and therefore take away that obligation and, and cost to those groups, which presents a different situation. The, there is inconsistencies across the city around fencing of facilities. We've done an audit across those just to get a bit of a context around those, and at the moment, there's eight venues across the city which have got fully fenced facilities without pedestrian access. And then there's some with partially fenced and, and a whole range of things. There's a whole range of reasons as that's quite, has occurred. Some of it is because facilities that, and this is a large proportion, have come across from either Bow Desert, former Bow Desert Shire Council, or Gold Coast, and they were fenced when they've come to, into Logan. And in other circumstances where the funding was provided under the previous program, the branch didn't actually control or, or provide input into the decision. Effectively, at that time, the councillors had the discretion to say this is the project, and unless the project breached the guidelines at the time for other reasons, they wouldn't even come to council for consideration. The, the one in the east that you speak of also does have pedestrian access. I think it's not great pedestrian access. It's, 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 it's really difficult to get into that site, but it still technically does meet that requirement. The, the situation with Logan Brothers, obviously I'm in your hands to guide the decisions that are made. I've, I've made that recommendation. I do observe the schoolchildren that obviously go across there to get back through, access through Logan Gardens, and yes, that can be provided with, with access points to enable that to still can continue. I'm, I'm in your hands as far as we're to from here.
Can I just ask a follow-up question through you, Madam Chair? The facilities that aren't complying, that we did inherit, are you asking them to open their, their grounds up completely to the public, to take down those bollards to enable people with wheelchairs and what have you to, if it's, if it's a rule across the city, are you forcing compliance from those groups, or are you leaving them be because we inherited them that way? So, that inconsistency would remain.
Through the chair. So, no, we haven't required or have no program to remove any of the existing infrastructure. One point that I might make though as well, which is an interesting inconsistency also, is where we have, where we are the custodians' lands as far as state-owned land. So, under the state government's policy with the secondary use of, of public land, they actually have a very clear policy which is, which states that, that, that those facilities aren't to be fenced, and specifically aren't to be fenced for the purpose of enabling revenue generation through gated activities and that type of thing. So, we're just mindful about consistency with land which we are managing under the trustee provisions of state land as well as council, and how that gets managed into the future as well. But to answer your question, no, there's no program to remove fencing.
Thank you councillor Lane. I have councillors Raven, Murphy, and Wilcox. Councillor Raven.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd like to foreshadow amendment to the recommendation to remove the words "not" from number three and number four, but we'll address that when we get to, to the end of the process. Councillor Lane spoke very well on this and, and addressed a number of my questions and concerns. But I did want to point to the objection or the, the risks that you've identified around the cost of maintenance of the fence. The club spends somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000 every year maintaining their fields, but you don't take the cost of them having to redo that repeatedly because there's continual public access throughout the entire year, which is much higher than any maintenance cost that that fence is ever going to cause them. I also understand that the club isn't going to restrict public access. The gates will be open unless they're explicitly poisoning the fields or doing some kind of maintenance, exactly the same way that council would close a footpath in the interest of public safety. They should also be able to close their fields in the interest of public safety. And if they do get to do, if they do get entrust games where there is an obligation that if you want to host, you have to be able to close the gate and charge an entry, then, then that's just an added bonus. But I think the main reason here is actually around public safety and the safety of children. So, Logan Brothers, for those who don't know, is the largest junior rugby league club in the state. So, it's got over 900 players. Those are children that are playing on fields at night in an area where we know that there is higher crime than there is in other parts of the city. Wouldn't you as a parent feel safer knowing that there was a fence that meant there was only one or two ways that people could get in and out of the field, and you knew those areas were well lit and you could observe them at all times, and it gave you the confidence that council was taking care of the safety of your children while they're, while they're playing sport? And that's the main reason to do it. They have massive days there where they do their end-of-year award ceremonies where they put, they put rides and, and games onto the fields. And again, you have adults that are near that area that aren't part of the club, that can just wander into that space, and you don't know because there's so many extra people on the fields. So, those fences would just improve the safety of the area. It will have a minor impact on the amenity of, of the Logan Gardens, but the majority of the people are just walking through that path. They're not actually staying there except maybe the people using the exercise equipment. So, maybe the exercise equipment people will have to admire the fence, but it's going to be a beautiful one. The last comment I'd make is specifically around the cost. When this project is finished and we can see the final costings, I'm going to refer it to the procurement and appropriation special committee, because this is a great example of the club used the exact same spec that council used, got a quote from the same vendor that the council used, and was profoundly cheaper than what council got. Now, that could just be the advantage that community organisations have over governments, where they can say, hey, we're not for profit. Can you please do your best possible price for us? But I would love to understand exactly how we got to that place where $250,000 is the difference between the estimate and the final quote.
I'd just like to say thank you councillor Raven for your impassioned plea, but do you have a question regarding the report for the manager?
No.
Thank you councillor Raven. Well, now maybe to-
Sorry, through the chair.
Thank you. Sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify with the, the costings. We never got a quote on that particular facility, so what we had, we'd gained, we obtained quotes around the Kingston Butter Factory as part of the development there, and we used the per meter rates that were provided to those quotes, just to-
No, that's great. Thank you. But when it's all done and we can see the actual costs, because I know sometimes a quote can blow out when reality comes in, and that's why you have contingencies built into your estimates. But when it's all said and done, it'd be good to review it and just see where it went.
Are you finished councillor Raven?
I am.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to relay my support to both councillor Lane and councillor Raven with regards to the local netball courts that is down in Beanley. We are actually looking further to have lockable fences down there because of the antisocial behaviour that goes on into the courts, which is then carried over to the associations to clean up before events happen and have that extra cost, from broken bottles on the court to people vomiting, to having parties, having fires, et cetera. It's something that we probably need to address. We are looking at funding through the state government for the extra fencing on that grounds, and then we will be putting up, if this all goes through, signage saying if you want to use these courts, please contact this association and available numbers for them to be able to use those court on a booking parameter. So, I totally support what you're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, councillor Murphy. Again, no question for the manager there? No, thank you. Councillor Wilcox.
Thank you. And I agree councillor Raven touched on my concerns and stuff as well. I was going to raise council likes the clubs to upkeep their fields and that sort of thing, and when you have clubs that are top dressing, that re-turfing for thousands and thousands of dollars, they're, they're irrigating their, their fields and that sort of thing, there are certain times when you do want to keep people off those grounds and that sort of thing so that you can establish them and so that they don't get ruined, and then the clubs aren't up for thousands, because it's not the council that, that does these upkeep. It is the clubs themselves essentially, and they are the ones that have to raise the funds and that sort of thing. So, I did have questions and they were all answered, so I don't have any questions either. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Wilcox and councillor Stemp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my only question was just in relation to the, the state government's operational policy. So, what, if this went ahead potentially, what are the implications for, say, council or, you know, based on not complying with that per se? Just curious.
Thank you. Through the chair. So, the, the policy that's referred to in the report with the state government, if I can find it, is in relation to trust land. So, it's, so there's land which council obviously owns freehold, and the provisions of that policy don't, don't apply. But there are parks across the city. Canoe Bia Park is an example. Tansy Park is both examples, both interestingly within your divisions. So, under those, we are required to comply with the secondary use of trust land policy. So, if we applied to fence either of those, fully fence those and exclude access, then they, then that wouldn't be supported by the state. It'd be inconsistent with that, that policy. And, and, but it is specific. It is very specific around the, the reference to seeking to exclude public at other times or enabling the charging for on match days. So, it, it's, it's about encouraging and enabling public access. That's, that's the whole point of that policy, which is consistent with local law, subordinate local law 5.1, but it's more, it's got more strength in that it's, it's actually a provision that we have to comply with.
Okay, so it's more relevant to the city as a whole as opposed to this specific?
It, it doesn't apply in this location.
No, I just wanted to check. Yeah, thank you. Councillors, do I have any other questions? Councillor Hall, followed by councillor Bannon.
This is more of a statement than, I guess, a question, and it's, it's sad to say that we've come into an era now that we can't have good things. I mean, the actions of a few impact the livelihood and the, the living of, of the whole. You know, the, the days that a kid could pick up a football, walk down to his, his local field and kick the ball around, they're coming to an end simply because people do not respect what we have in terms of community infrastructure, or they just use it as, as if it's their own area to, to have fun and, and not consider what its use is or what its purpose for, you know, leaving glass on football fields and, and driving cars or horses through it. You know, it's, it's very sad that we've come to a day and age that we have to put everything behind a cage just to, just to keep it safe. And, you know, I think people should be mindful of, you know, what activities their, their kids are doing, or, or, you know, even what some adults are doing in terms of the impacts that it has in the daily lives of other people that use those facilities. We wouldn't be even having this conversation if people took care and respected those fields and the clubs that, you know, spend a lot of money looking after them. We wouldn't, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. But it's the case that the only way that these clubs are going to be able to protect those fields, protect the, those areas so that kids can actually get out on those fields and, and sporting clubs can, can use them, is to put them behind a steel cage. So, I hope people are mindful when they do see these fences go up, if this comes to pass, that these are the reasons that why they went up in the first place.
Thank you for sharing your sentiment councillor Hall, and I agree with you. It is a sad day when we have to fence off community assets to our residents. Who have I got? Councillor Bannon.
Through the chair, this is for Nigel. So, if councillors go down the road of letting clubs or private contractors do the work, as in put up a fence or shed or whatever, as has been some dramas in the past, which the mayor's talked about, is there some way that you can go stronger through the scope of works for the contract for that, as in variations, time delays, you know, payment, warranty issues on it? I know from the building trade where I've come from- trade where I've come from, you don't get paid until the job's finished. I've got a twenty five year guarantee, I've got a scope of works, I've got everything in it. So the problems that have happened in the past, with the ones that, I can't remember where it was, the mayor was talking about, we're all in pear shape when the club ran the project. Is there stuff that we can, like, if not everyone's across the buildings, the building codes and how to do it, have we got someone, like, I know how to do it? Is there somewhere we can go through the scope on the actual contract before we award that out?
Through the chair, so by, with any of the projects where we're looking for special consideration on the basis that the funding will go to the club and the clubs will deliver, the intent of the, the guidelines of the local infrastructure programme is for the relevant branches to deliver, who have got the offices, technical offices and procurement guidelines to prevent exactly those situations, which is why we would prefer to deliver them ourselves. But given the, the rationale and the reason why these are looking to be delivered, whether it's about the ability to secure better costs by not going through council, or whether it's about being able to deliver them quicker, because obviously we have a large existing programme of works and they have to be put in to a timeframe. So, so to answer your question, there isn't. The, the provision that we have is that the Logan Brothers in this instance would still need a landowner's consent to undertake those works. And when, what we would do in that space is provide a checklist of things which we would require them to still meet and comply with, and that we would provide a, a review of what's delivered at the end to ensure the release of the funding or that they've acquitted their money correctly. What we don't do is provide a level of project management on that, because it effectively makes us responsible for the delivery right from the start, which is what, if we wanted to do that, then we would just do it through a normal project. So have I answered your question?
You have, because given those points that we can give to the clubs, could almost be like a scope of works, and say you need to do these steps to be able to get the money. And at least as long as we can look at the finalized product before they get payment. I know when I do a job, I don't get paid until it's finished. So I'm not big on paying anything until it's, I know for my division, I don't want to generalise because I don't like when people generalise me, but I wouldn't be handing rate payers money over if something's gone bad. I just don't want the mistakes of the past to happen, like the mayor went through, and that costing rate payers extra money. Thanks, madam chair.
Thank you councillor Bannon. Councillor Lane, closing remarks before we move on?
No, just, just a question. Just to be clear, Nigel, your concerns around the club are not that they can't manage this project financially, or that it will in some way, shape or form go pear shaped. It's more that you have a series of processes and council under lip funding predominantly should be undertaking most of the works, but there are a number of projects here where they're not, and they're happy not to do that. Council, just to be clear, Logan Brothers hasn't asked to permanently close any gates. They're, they're putting gates in. In fact, they're putting double gates in, in some areas. So they're not closing access in any way, shape or form, except for in those periods where they'll apply to council for the purpose of field maintenance or an event on, in their, in their facility. So Nigel, just to be clear, your concern isn't around that they can, they can't manage a, a project of this size?
Through the chair, with the, with the projects which we've, we've supported, which are obviously smaller dollar value, certainly no issues with those, and we're comfortable that they will be able to deliver. This is a significant project, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a, a reasonably large contract for a, a club to manage, and, and we'll provide as much support and assistance as we can to help them through that process. But again, it's a, it's a decision for the councillors. I, I would always try to provide an opportunity for us to deliver the projects, and the example that was used previously with Logan Home Lightning is a, is a perfect example where a club just got in over its head in the delivery of a project. And we obviously don't want to see that situation.
And, and just one last question. If you were to be given the opportunity to do this project, how long would it be before it would be looked at, assessed and completed?
Through the chair, unfortunately I couldn't give you that, that sort of right at the moment. I'd need to go back and talk to our program leader in that area. There is a, but it's a very good question, and that program, the community infrastructure program is, is going to have some significant resourcing challenges over the next twelve months, predominantly on the back of the COVID funding we've received. But in saying that, we're very committed to delivering all the councillors' lip projects also.
Any, any further questions councillor Lane?
No, I just want to say I appreciate that.
Thank you. I will indulge a couple more questions, given that this is obviously an important issue and it will have impacts across the whole city, albeit that this issue might just be targeted in one area today. So councillor Murphy?
Thank you, madam chair. I just wanted to say thank you for the TS Warras. This community in my area of Eagleby needs extra activities, especially those aged between ten and seventeen, and TS Warras provides that. The flooring that they're getting installed will allow those unit stays for those teenage people. And I just wanted to say thank you to the team, because this is the quickest way we could possibly get this improvement done, so we could get them back on track. So thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillor Raven, does your question relate to the broader report, or more specifically to around Logan Brothers? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, madam chair. So before I move the amended motion, if you're ready for that, I'll just point out that, like, you're not ready for that? Okay, that's fine. I'll just point out that Logan Brothers delivered a three hundred thousand dollar project two years ago. Other than finding some asbestos, it got delivered on, on budget, which we know asbestos trips everybody up once you start digging into the ground. And when you're ready, I'll come back to the amended motion.
Thank you councillor Raven. Are there any other questions? Awesome. Thank you councillors for the robust debate. What we're going to do is, I'm actually going to put the recommendation as it currently appears on the board in front of councillors. And may I just ask you to consider that there are a number of projects that are listed here. If this recommendation doesn't get supported, councillor Raven has already foreshadowed an amended recommendation, which would be to approve items three and items four. So if, if it doesn't get approved in the first round, which means not approving the Logan Brothers' requests, then we will go again with a foreshadowed amendment, amended motion, the reason being that there's a number of items in this particular report. So councillors, do I have a mover for the motion as it appears on the board? There being no mover for that motion, that motion has been lost. Councillor Raven, I understand that you have foreshadowed an amendment to the recommendation?
Thank you, madam chair. To approve items three and four by removing the word 'not', which has already been done by the secretary.
Our clerks a moment to catch up. Councillors, I note that there has been an amended motion which impacts items three and items four with the removal of the word 'not'. So in other words, we're looking at approving, where are we? It's seventy five thousand dollars worth of lip funding for Division Two budget and seventy five thousand dollars worth of Division Five lip budget also. Could I have a mover for, to approve all projects, including that amendment? I have a mover in the form of councillor Lane. Do I have a seconder? The seconder is councillor Raven. All those in favour, please raise your hands. That is supported with the exception of councillor Herramiah. Councillor Herramiah, how do you vote?
Against.
Thank you councillor Herramiah.
Thank you councillors. Okay, councillors, the next item we have is actually item four point two, which is on page thirty of your agendas. Now, this is actually a confidential item. Before we open for discussions on the item, do any councillors have any conflicts of interest that they wish to declare? There being none, I note that it's considered necessary to take the discussion of this report into a closed session, as confidential attachments relate to a development approval and haven't been made publicly available. Do any councillors wish to move into closed session for this item, and if applicable, provide an overview of your intended discussion if it's different to the proposed, the prepared motion? I remind councillors that there's no desire to discuss the confidential matter, then there's no requirement to move into closed session. If so, I now open the floor to councillors. Councillors, do you wish to move into confidential?
Point of order, madam chair.
My apologies.
Under the new legislation, you can't go into confidential for development assessment, unless it's commercial in confidence is the information you're trying to...
Thank you councillor Raven. I am afraid that this is beyond my skill set, so I'll seek further advice.
We've got Dave Bradish out the back of the room, he's probably more familiar. It's got to be commercial in confidence, I think, from the developer's point of view, but not in regards to a development assessment matter, that's all, because that got removed as reasons for why we can go into.
Thank you councillor Raven. I might actually refer to the CEO in the first instance. Silvio, are you able to provide us with some assistance?
What's on the board doesn't use the development, the item that you've used, the section you've used doesn't refer to it, it's just the comments that you've made. So we're not going, yeah, it's confidential under law is the reason that we're going to confidential rather than for a development approval.
I thank you for your astute...
Sorry.
...observation, and I appreciate that you do listen to me when I speak. I'm just waiting for clarity from the CEO, but the advice I've received from the deputy mayor is that the recommendation that's on the board behind me does in fact comply.
So...
Thank you, everyone. I'll now invite Silvio Trinca, acting CEO, to make comment with regard to moving into confidential. Thank you, Silvio.
Councillors, the way I, I am led to believe that this report is not about necessarily an approval of the development, but it is commercially in confidence in regards to the information that has been provided by the developer is not in the public arena. The council decision that might be made today to support or otherwise a request from the developer is commercially confident, in confidence, because it would rely on a decision of council to support, but it's not supporting a subdivision or a development per se. It's, it's supporting or otherwise a proposed use of land within the development. So I see it, which hasn't been made public in regards to the development proposal of the developer. So I see it slightly different to a normal development approval consideration. It's more to do with a, a decision that may be made by council, which could impact the developer's future use of his land. Does that make a bit, does that provide some clarification?
It does. Thank you, Silvio.
Thank you, Silvio, and forgive me for being somewhat distracted. So Silvio, am I correct that the motion that's on the board behind me at the moment satisfies requirements? Thank you councillors. We'll just take a brief moment while our minute clerk actually searches for a relevant piece of legislation that may in fact support the intent that we're trying to achieve here.
What time do you intend to have lunch?
Oh, I've finished.
Pardon me councillor Raven, would you mind hopping up for a moment, please?
Sorry, a section in regards to commercial confidence wouldn't, wouldn't actually relate to this item. So Nigel has just clarified that the reason we've used this one is because the area in question is actually under the, the Economic Development Queensland PDA area, who are the formal approval authority. And so it is another government state law that controls it, so it is probably the, the right one. Sorry about that.
Not at all, and I appreciate that we're all learning, and we're learning the new legislation role and new learning roles. And I thank councillor Raven for raising concerns. This is the opportunity to raise any concerns that you may have. I thank you, Silvio, for the clarity. And my understanding is that we will move forward with the motion that's on the board. And just to pick back up where we left off... Thank you. Do any councillors wish to move into the closed session for this item, and if applicable, provide an overview of your intended discussions if it's different to the motion on the board? Thank you councillor Wilcox. Would you like to state your move, your reason for wanting to move into confidential?
Because I wish to discuss the proposed use or future use of land in the development that has not been publicly, publicly released. Will that suffice?
I'm just waiting for the minute clerks to be able to pop this up on the board also. Do any other councillors have any other reasons that they'd like to raise? All right councillors, the reasons for moving in for confidential are on the board behind me right now. Could I have a councillor who is prepared to move the motion to move us into confidential? Thank you councillor Bannon, seconded by councillor Wilcox. By a show of hands, can I see all those who are in favour? Thank you, that has been unanimously supported. Councillors, we'll actually cease recording at this point in time. Thank you. Councillors, we'll actually cease recording at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors, for your robust obate and we welcome everyone who might be listening at home. Councillors, you have a recommendation on the board behind me. Do I have a mover for the current recommendation? You will soon have a recommendation on the board behind me.
Do I have a mover for the recommendation?
Thank you, councillor Herramire. Do I have a second for the recommendation? There being none, that recommendation has been lost. Councillor Wilcox foreshadowed amended recommendation. Councillor Wilcox, do you have that recommendation?
Yes.
Would you like to read it out?
That the Sport, Leisure and Facilities Manager be requested to continue to work with the Economic Development and Strategy branch to include planning for sports ovals that can be used for multiple sports but not limited to Australian Rules Football and Athletics as detailed in the Sports Field Concept Plan. Scenario two included the confidential background papers at Everleigh Regional Sports Park, Greenbank, conditional upon the proponent embellishing the fields to include club houses.
I believe that recommendation is now up on the board for councillors to view. Okay, councillor Wilcox, did you want to move the amendment? Councillor Wilcox has moved the amended recommendation. Councillor Raven has a question.
Just for Nigel to make sure that he's comfortable being able to prosecute that argument and that he understands what the intent of the... It's a little bit convoluted. He's like, "I don't really want to, but I will."
Sorry, sorry, councillor Wilcox, this was not the aforementioned recommendation that was put in front of council officers. So councillor officers are seeing this for the first time?
Yep, that's what I thought. Just give him a second to have a read of it.
Through the chair, I'm obviously guided again by the councillor's decision in this space. I would still caution about tying any decisions to areas that are outside of our control as far as use of school facilities to embellish or to top up the standards that are required. But I think, again, it gives us a guide as to where to start the negotiations with moving.
There's nothing there about schools.
So scenario two talks about that, but it's not included in the background papers.
So if you get me right, scenario two provides some of the field.
Yeah, confidential, so probably best not.
So may I ask this question of the manager? If this recommendation gets up today, are you comfortable that that meets council's requirements and doesn't overstep?
Through the chair, I think the fact that this is enabling us to continue to progress those discussions and negotiations is fine. As David has indicated, we don't have the decision-making delegation on this development, but it gives a clear intent as to where this discussion has wanted us to take it. So I'm comfortable we can achieve that.
Thank you, Nigel. I'll just defer to the director. Are you comfortable with the recommendation as it stands, Katie?
You could change the word conditional to preference that the proponent... The director would like to tone it down.
Councillor Wilcox, would you like to further amend the recommendation before I put it up? I think that there is an appetite to tone the recommendation down by the director.
Okay.
Through the chair, I just don't know if it's our place to make a conditional stipulation.
I don't know that it was so much to make a conditional stipulation, but I think it was for us to have those further discussions with them to embellish it.
Councillor Raven, do you see a way forward?
Would you be open to just changing... So the director's concern is that we're making our support conditional upon something where we have no leverage whatsoever in the conversation beyond our ability to have a conversation. So perhaps if you change it to noting that council's preference is that the proponent embellishes the fields? So that means Nigel makes your case that you want them to embellish the fields, but he's not going to walk out of the room if they refuse to. Because conditional means he will, unless they meet his condition, he's got to walk.
But that field's going to be given to us anyway.
Councillor Wilcox, just a reminder of our previous discussions also as we're talking across the room. Councillor Wilcox, are you satisfied with the change?
Twenty twenty seven, I think it said. Oh, look at that. Great work, Kate.
Okay, Nigel, are you satisfied with that change?
No.
Thank you. Councillor Wilcox, would you like to move the amended motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Do I have a second for the amended motion as appears on the board? That's councillor Bannon. By a show of hands, could I see those who are in favour? That has been carried and could I please have my name recorded as against... Thank you. Thank you, councillors. I appreciate that was quite a long session. That actually marks the end of that report, but I will now ask the manager if you have any GB items that you'd like for councillors.
Thank you. Through the chair, no GB for myself.
Councillors, do you have any GB items for Nigel? There being none, I'd like to declare the meeting closed at one sixteen and thank you for your attention and a huge thank you to those of you who read through your 800 pages of background material this round. Thanks, everyone. We'll reconvene. Actually, if I can just defer to the officers for a moment, I'm assuming councillors would like a break for lunch.
That would be out of discretion.
Councillors, before you duck off, would you like a break for lunch?
The next committee is going to be super short, though, and you'll have to wait to start it anyway because you've got to start it at ten minutes.
I'm conscious. I think we're going to press ahead. If anyone wants to grab some lunch and bring it back in with them, I'm agreeable to that. I would have asked councillor Wilcox, who's chair, that she's actually left the room, but we'll reconvene at one twenty six PM. Thanks, everyone. I now declare the meeting closed.